Regional Planning Commission, if you would stand with us please. Commissioner Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you for this day and the questions you give us. Opportunity to hear the Sermon on a Man, pray in the heart of what we say that we do tonight. We pray that equal to everyone is served. We also ask that in the morning. Thank you for the country we live in, the great, wonderful joy. This is a month that we set aside today, a country that set aside today to remember those who gave their awful sacrifices for us. Truly thankful for that. Jim, we thank you all. Jim.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Call or roll please, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion, Craig Lynch, David Jones, Jim Aberwater, Lee Bogle, Mike Kush, Mike Vaught, Pettis Reed, Rhonda Allen, Jeff Phillips.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. This time we need to approve the minutes for our March 11th and 25th meetings. I'll call on our Vice Chair, Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed both sets of meeting minutes for the month of March. They appear to be in order. I have no corrections or alterations, so I would make a motion to accept those in the archives.
We have a motion and a second to approve March 11th and 25th meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Motion carries, thank you. No items withdrawn or deferred?
Correct.
Here we go. Under New Business Items 6A, these are items submitted for final plat review. 6A1, Item 18-2080, Nature Walk, Section 1, Phase 2, 19 lots on 4.83 acres, zoned PUD, located on Beulah Rose Drive. A&R Land Investments is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, Commission members. Hope everybody's doing well today. The three plats that we have to consider tonight are all reapprovals. This first one is Nature Walk, Section 1, Phase 2. The preliminary plan for this subdivision was granted by the Planning Commission back in January of 2014. It was approved by the Plan Commission, the final plat originally was approved by the Planning Commission at their July 23, 2018 meeting. Final plat approvals are only valid for 180 days, so this approval has lapsed. The plat hasn't changed, it's in good order, it just needs reapproval. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item 18-2080, Nature Walk, Section 1, Phase 2. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. 6A2, Item Number 18-2083, Nature Walk, Section 2, 47 lots on 26.83 acres, zoned PUD, located along Beulah Rose Drive. A&R Land Investments are the applicants. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The circumstances behind the last plat are similar for this, even the dates of approval. Again, this is just for reapproval, plat is in good order, nothing has changed with it, it's just expired.
We have a motion and a second to approve 18-2083, Nature Walk, Section 2. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. 6A3, 18-2111, Long Creek Subdivision, Section 6, 33 lots on 38.79 acres, zoned RM, located on Center Rock Drive. Michael's Homes is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission back in October of 2016. The final plat was originally approved by the Planning Commission in October of last year. Again, this is just a expiration. The plat is in good order, nothing has changed on it, so they're just seeking reapproval tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion and a second to approve 18-2111, Long Creek Subdivision, Section 6. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. Item 6B, these are items submitted for site plan review. 6B1, 19-3023, Angler's Retreat Mail Kiosk. New construction of a mail kiosk site on approximately 680 acres. Boy, that's a big mail kiosk. On Lot 78, zoned RM, located along Angler's Retreat Drive. Jonathan Trout is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Should be 680 square feet, so I'm sorry about that. The U.S. Postal Service, of course, we're familiar with their new requirements for centralized delivery and newly developed subdivisions. We have approved zoning ordinance amendments to that effect. This is the kiosk for the second phase of Angler's Retreat. We've done our initial review on this, and they've submitted a revised drawing, which is what you see on the screen and on your iPads. There's just a few tweaks that need to be made to this, nothing that I would deem substantial in the fact that it should be deferred or anything. So, again, it's in pretty decent order, just a few things need to be tweaked, but with that, we would make a recommendation for approval, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. I think about 30 to 40 lots, I believe. The applicant is actually here, I just forget, how many in Section 2?
Forty.
Forty, forty lots. I believe that's enough for two spaces, which is consistent with our requirements.
Doug, did we decide that we're not going to recommend that any of these be labeled as handicap, but that they would need to be handicap accessible?
What we ended up doing on this one, I think you're recalling that correctly, they've designed it as such, but it's not labeled, so anybody can park in either one.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve 19-3023, Angler's Retreat Mail Kiosk. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. 6B2, 19-3024, Madison Cove Mail Kiosk. New construction of mail kiosk site on approximately 8,800 square feet, which is Lot 86, zoned RM, located along Santos Drive. Leanna Investment is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Similar to the last application, this is a little bit different design, as you can see, they're actually using a portion of a lot to house the kiosk. So, again, beyond some tweaks that need to be made, just to make sure that the area that they're showing is not going to interfere with any existing drive or proposed driveways on the adjacent lots, those are things we can work out as staff, so we're not too concerned about that, but beyond the tweaks, it's in good order, so we'd recommend approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve 19-3024, Madison Cove Mail Kiosk. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. Item 6C, these are items that are rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. 6A1, 19-A009, Don L. Bruce. Location is Old Nashville Highway. Commission District is 19. County Commissioner is Steve Irvin. Size of the site is approximately 36 acres. Tax map 70. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CN, commercial neighborhood, and LI, light industrial. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to zone this particular, there's two properties involved, he's looking to do a combination of a couple of different zones. He's looking to do about 17 acres of the subject property as it fronts along Old Nashville Highway to commercial neighborhood to allow a mixture of single-family and multifamily units, possibly small businesses. The remainder of the property, approximately 20 acres, which, a chunk of that would, but the heavy industrially zoned property directly to the southeast, would be zoned light industrial again to allow for stockpiling of dirt, rock, sand, building materials, those kind of things. There would also be structures for storage and maintenance of equipment. The applicant did include a concept plan with your agenda materials for your reference. As you can see, access to the property would be from Old Nashville Highway. Any new or modified ingress egress points would need to be approved by the Rutherford County Highway Department. The concept plan does show a gravel storage area. The zoning ordinance does require hard dustless surfaces for most parking areas, but those areas primarily used for storage could have a gravel base. Of course, any development that he'd want to do on this would require a site plan should this be approved. Commercially zoned properties are required to install a Type 2 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned properties. Light industrially zoned properties are required to put a Type 3 buffer, so that would apply to those areas adjacent to the residentially zoned lands, not so much to the area that is zoned heavy industrial again to the southeast. Existing plannings can count toward that, but, again, a landscape plan would have to be submitted along with site plan approval should this be approved, and the performance standards in our ordinance would also apply to that. From a zoning standpoint, as you can see on the map on the screen, again, this is adjacent to heavy industrially zoned land. You can also see a small institutionally zoned property and some office professional zoned property in that area. Across the street, there's some residential uses, a single-family, also a mobile home park directly across, right there where Mike has his pointer located. So, from a zoning standpoint, you see a variety of different zones in this area. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, the applicant is present.
Any questions for staff at this time? Tell us what you've got in mind.
Let's see. My name is Ewing Sellers. I was asked by Don Bruce to speak on his behalf. I'm an attorney here in town. My address is 111 North Maple Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 37130. As previously stated by Mr. Demossi, this 37 acres is proposed change from residential medium density to commercial neighborhood and light industrial. The portion that would be commercial neighborhood is approximately the first 450 feet back from Old Nashville Highway. Approximately 17 acres, that could be zoned single-family, multifamily, small business, up to 5,000 square feet. The light industrial is the portion, 20 acres in the back, that's surrounded by the heavy industrial, I believe it's IMI or asphalt plan. To the east is CSX Railway, and to the northwest would be the Buddhist Temple property. In the report, it shows that the Rutherford County Comprehensive Plan shows this property being included in a general urban character area, which recommends both residential and non-residential uses. And also, the City of Murfreesboro 2040 Comprehensive Plan has it marked as a business park proposed. These two uses are compatible with Mr. Bruce's zoning request, and he asked for approval of the rezoning. Any questions?
Once again, any questions or comments for staff before we get into the public hearing?
You had any calls on these from the neighborhood, Doug?
I have received some calls and a couple, at least one person had walked in just asking, had some concerns about it, but yes, we have received some calls. I mean, both, some with concerns, some just general information.
This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for Item 19-A009, Don L. Bruce. This is a request for commercial neighborhood and light industrial rezoning. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. If you would, give your name and address for the record, right here, please.
I'm Joy Hord, and I live on the Old Nashville Highway, and we have property, I guess 700 feet from this property. I wondered why I didn't get the notice in the mail, and you send it to people within 500 feet, so I wasn't eligible to get that. But I'm quite concerned about this rezoning. I know that property, and I know that road. Sometimes it takes me five or 10 minutes to get across the road to get my mail out of my mailbox, so we do have heavy traffic, especially in the early morning and the late afternoon, and I do know that that property has some water problems. And when Reynolds subdivision was put in, on the Old Nashville Highway, I was there at the County Planning Commission, and the engineer said that all that water was going to the overall creek. The problem is that we have some low land before the overall creek, and then there's a hill. There was no way that that water was going to get to overall creek, and I was there at those planning commission meetings, and they didn't listen to me. And so now, we have a field that holds water, we have neighbors who have fields that hold water, and if we plant corn in that field, we can count on losing one or two or three acres of it. So, I'm not real happy about what happened to me years ago, and I for sure will be here and look at the maps and see who his engineer is and hire my own engineer if I feel like I have to or I need to, because we need to protect, I know that Murfreesboro is all about more development, but there's some of us who still want to live here and have our homes here, and I'm quite concerned about this. I don't think this is the time for me to get up here and stomp my feet, because we haven't seen the plan yet. But I will be back, and I'm very interested in this plan, and I urge them to be sensitive to the neighborhood when they propose this plan, and I certainly am not happy about the light industrial portion of it. That's all I have to say, but thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Philip Hearn with 5001 Old Nashville, which is Reynolds Mobile Home Park.
Thank you. Do I need to tell these folks who I am?
Yeah. My name is Philip Hearn. I own and operate, as well as live at Reynolds Mobile Home Park, which is the property directly across from where this is wanting to happen. This lady that's just in front of me hit on several good points. Traffic is an issue. Industrial traffic is an issue. I object to both of these changes being made, and I do that just watching in the last year or so how LoJack, I think there's some kind of refuse fill-up dump or something going on over there, and they can get a contract at any given time, and we just got rid of one, I believe, but where we could have 25, probably 20 trucks, dump trucks, these are the 22-ton trucks hauling junk, that's dirt, rock, any kind of debris into this fill-up, and this goes on in the morning up until probably 5:00 in the evening, and this is a constant problem here sometimes. Now, we accept that being in the neighborhood already, but I don't think we really want to go and change and make more industrial in that area. This lady also made a good point, where some of us are here for long-term, we like the residential community part of it, the homes, that type of stuff, but we haven't really seen the full plan yet. I'll be back with her, but I object to the two things today. And one other thing that we all need to keep in mind is that this community here is the battlefield community, a lot of historical value, a lot of historical treasures, as well as events here, and I think with that being said, I think that sort of keeps that community, our community together to want to keep a residential-type atmosphere there. I think we accept LoJack because they've been there so long, not LoJack, but Stone Man, Rogers Group, whoever's owned that quarry in the past, but we accept them because they've been there so long, and they are probably considered a staple in that community, and we try to work with them, but there's that date coming when things will change, and we'll have to be ready for that. But we do accept it, but I don't believe our community needs to make that industrial change at this property, and thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. Deputy, you okay?
My name is William Turner. I stay at 5037 Old Nashville Highway. I'm right across from the Rolet property, that's who he purchased it from. I like the neighborhood I live in, I like my neighbors, I have no problem with the trailer court, I've been there for 30 years or more, so I like being in the resident, and I don't want to see it turn commercial. We have a traffic problem already. Speed limit's 40 miles an hour, but I guarantee you it's 50 and 60 going up and down that road all the time. We have a truck problem. We have a lot of problems that, and I'm sure that if it turns to commercial, it's going to be more problems that are going to come in. I know Murfreesboro is growing, Murfreesboro is going to expand and become bigger, but I'm like Mrs. Hord, we need to try to look out for the people that live there in that neighborhood, and I don't want to move. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, but I will be back.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member committee, and I'm here on behalf of the Buddhist Temple on Nashville Highway. The Buddhist temple had been established since 1980, it's about 39 years now. They welcome Mr. Bruce and allow them to purchase about 10 acres adding next to the Buddhist temple. That's why they wouldn't be able to come here this evening, because they have, you know, many things to do. They asked me to say, "Come here just to share with you." I appreciate your time and listen to this. Thank you.
Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Let me ask a quick question. Doug, this has been zoned residential forever?
I think as long as I've been here, yes, sir. I mean, we-
Is it any chance that it'll ever be developed from a residential perspective?
Well, the commercial neighborhood he's asking for will allow for residential uses, not just single-family, but even multifamily-type uses, duplexes, twi-, a lot of it's going to depend on the kind of soil that he has and just how it's all laid out, but he can get residential uses in the commercial neighborhood zone.
Mike, can you comment as to drainage and which direction? Show us up there, if it does develop in any form, residential or otherwise, sort of what we're looking at?
Right. Now, there is a big swath of floodplain on this property, right in the center of it. It looks like it's backwater from, I guess, the creek farther to the north. Just a second, it'll draw. And there are a couple of sinkholes in the back of the property that would have to be addressed. You can see the flood zone here in the blue, and the, kind of the brownish is the 500-year flood zone, and this is the property outlined in yellow, the two properties.
All right, which way is your water flow, and does it cross under 840?
Looks like it's going to the north. It's trying to go to the north and go farther north. I'll show you in a second.
Doug, in the commercial neighborhood portion of this that he was requesting, again, tell us what we can have.
Well, commercial neighborhood of the three commercial zones is the most restrictive. It's also the only commercial zone of the three commercial neighborhood services or general that does allow for single-family or residential uses. You could have townhome developments in commercial neighborhood, you could have single-family detached, like what we would normally see in the RM, duplexes, multifamily, you cannot have a mobile home, like a mobile home park in that zone. You could also have, the biggest change between this and the other commercial zones as far as retail uses go, is that the retail uses are limited to 5,000 square feet, so anything larger than 5,000 square feet would have to be a different zoning classification. But other type uses are allowed, animal care, veterinary services, you can have consumer repair services, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one, let's see, financial, consultative, administrative, like a bank or something like that, food and beverage services, a small restaurant would fit there, general personal services, daycare, things like that would be allowed. Again, retail, 5,000 square feet or less would be allowed in that zone, medical services, undertaking services, and then, of course, agricultural sales and services, that just gives you kind of an overview of the different types of uses in that zone.
So, in the commercial, commercial sort of, it has a ring to it, a lot of business, a lot of business, but this could be people living there with some business.
It could be one of the, yes, sir. It could be both. I mean, he could have part of it as residential, he could have the other part as a small business if he wanted to, he could do that there.
It's not as devastating to a community as like the light industrial?
No, sir. I mean, the range of, when you say devastating, it can be, a lot of it depends on the uses, of course.
Yes.
But I would, what I would say is a commercial neighborhood would not allow the range of uses that light industrial would allow. There's a lot more uses that may not be as neighborhood-friendly that are allowed in light industrial that would not be allowed in a commercial neighborhood zone.
What these people are interested in, yes?
Yes.
What was the intended use for the light industrial request on the zoning? Because what I've seen in the packet so far looks like just stockpiling of materials, dirt.
That's what he was, that's what was in his application.
Might be done under the commercial neighborhood?
Not in the commercial neighborhood, commercial general, maybe, might allow for something like that, not so much light industrial.
Yeah. I was curious what was driving the light industrial, because it didn't seem to really fit.
I think he was looking more for just a range of uses. Now, another issue with, and this, I don't think this really came up, but one big difference between light industrial and the commercial uses, and we've talked about this before, many warehouse-type facilities, they're allowed by right in the light industrial zone, but not in the commercial zones. They'd have to be special exception to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, again, I think he's just looking for more of a range of uses is what he's looking for.
But I would like to add that stockpiling material in the FEMA flood zone would require compensating cut in the same amount, so it would be a challenge.
Doug, I'm running possibilities through my mind, and one of the things is the intensity of development on this piece of property, and a lot of that hinges upon the availability of sewer or soils. How far, do you have any idea how far sewer is from this property?
You can pull it up on the map here. Now, as a crow flies, it's probably not that far. Now, as a crow flies, it's probably not that far. Now, actually getting it to the property, that's another challenge in and of itself, but Mike will pull that up here.
So you have sewer along overall creek on this side, and then, like Doug was saying, it's not readily close, but I mean, it's in the neighborhood. I mean, still a long ways off, though.
I don't see that as being able to have a whole lot of very intense development in the near term anyway until the city does something.
Right.
Kind of restricted by your soils there, and if you've got sinkholes, that's a further restriction and floodplain.
There are some good soils up front, some good Harpeth and I think Cumberland along the front of the property. Let's see, give it a second to draw. Yeah, Harpeth and Loman, I'm sorry, Loman up front, a little bit of Bradieville, but Harpeth and Loman are two of the better soils in the county.
Doug, back to this, you said we're going to use this for stockpiling?
Well, that's what his, that's what the applicant's materials said. That's what, one of the uses he was looking at.
Said that would be okay in commercial general?
That would fall under construction, sales, and services, I believe, and now it'd have to be appropriately screened, of course, but we've seen similar type businesses in some of the other commercial zones. Commercial general, I think, would be the more, for that, if that was really the intended use, that would probably be an acceptable zone for something like that.
Did you talk to Mr. Bruce about that, commercial general? Would he be interested?
We didn't really have any discussion about that in particular, no, sir.
Doug, we're considering these as a package and not individually, the two different zones?
Correct. Yeah, it don't have to move on both of them. It can just be as one. That's correct. It would be as one. Now, I mean, you can make recommendations, say, I'd rather see, you know, instead of light industrial, commercial general, and instead of commercial neighborhood, leave it RM. I mean, you can, you have a range of options, or you could approve it as is or deny, I mean, but you don't have to take each one, the commercial neighborhood portion and then the light industrial portion. You don't have to make separate motions for that. I think that was really what your question was, wasn't it? I mean, I still would just put it under one, just to make it clear, honestly. I think separating it might get a little confusing.
I have a question for Mike. You touched on this a little bit, but it was one of the questions that I had already written down, and that was the dirt, rock, and sand. If you're looking at stockpiling that in an area that's flood-prone, if you were going to build something, you'd have to build it up to keep it out of that. So what does this, what does this do to your water quality, stormwater quality? How do you control this? And is, and I guess the flip side of that question is, given that there's so much floodplain in this area, is, does that make it a good use for stockpiling? I mean, is that, I'm always looking for the highest and best use of the land, so I'm thinking through the impact of doing it, and is it a good idea?
Right. Any disturbed area, any development that we see in the county would require some kind of stormwater quality and quantity. You know, we'd have to capture the water and treat it before it ran off, so, and we wouldn't impact anybody downstream, we wouldn't run any more water on the neighbors downstream, and also, anything that we do, we have to clean it and treat it to state stormwater standards. And then floodplain issue, that's going to be the big thing. If they're going to use this for a stockpile area, we, in the county, we can't lose that volume. We need to have a compensating cut somewhere on the property that we don't lose that storage volume in our floodplain. So this appears to be some backwater area from Stones River going off to the north. It looks like it's kind of meandering to the north. It has to leapfrog across some sinkholes, and then I would say there's most likely a box culvert or some kind of drainage structure underneath Broad Street, I mean, New Nashville Highway to get farther north to the Stones River. But, yeah, it's going to be a challenging piece of property, I mean, either way. If it were residential or commercial, it's going to be a challenge.
And then, I guess, Doug, my follow-up to that is then, on the light industrial, even though this is his stated purpose, what else could go in light industrial if we do rezone it?
Okay. Light industrial, and let me just kind of do this in a way that, kind of comparing light industrial to, say, commercial general. There are some uses in commercial general that would not be allowed in light industrial, automotive parking being one of them. Again, one of the big differences being mini warehouse type facilities being allowed by right in light industrial as opposed to the commercial zones. Where you start getting into some of the bigger differences, well, another difference, transit accommodations, like hotels and things, would be allowed in commercial general, but not in light industrial. The big difference again is in the, anything classified as light industrial in the zoning ordinance in our appendix, that's, would be allowed in the light industrial zone, would not be allowed in a commercial general. Anything actually classified as a light industrial activity would not be allowed in the commercial general. You could see transport and warehousing in light industrial, but not in commercial general. Scrap operations could be a special exception in the light industrial, but not in the commercial general. So that's where you see the primary differences between the two.
And then with the asphalt plant that's already there, we kind of inherited that with the pre-zoning, pre-comprehensive plan. So what could be done to accommodate industrial traffic, knowing that he only has to improve the part of the property that fronts the road?
Well, and again, a lot of it's going to depend on the type of business he gets. You know, if he zones it light industrial and ends up getting a more type, a more commercial type user, you know, we might not have to look as hard at potential road improvements. Any site plan we get, we'd want to, first of all, know what the use is going to be, and that would help us determine what we want to see from a traffic impact standpoint, if we want to see like turn lanes or something like that on the property. Depending, again, on the use, it might not be necessary, but if we're going to see a lot of in-and-out large truck traffic, we're going to want to see some sort of an analysis of road improvements in that area, at least along the frontage of the property as far as it's concerned.
Do you hear from either one of the property owners that have the two parcels that this kind of wraps around?
If I did, they didn't identify them as such, so. I did speak to some people, but I don't recall anybody specifically saying, "I own that property right there that's surrounded by this property." And again, I talked to a lot of different people, and today, they may have said it, and I just don't remember it, but I don't specifically recall speaking to either one of those folks.
Mike, can you pull up the 2010 flood map or play it?
Sinkhole areas are obscured by the tree foliage, but I assume, I would assume that These are classified as freshwater ponds and probably an old farm pond as well. But that's most likely a sinkhole because of the rock formations and depression, it's never been farmed, probably never, or if it has been farmed, it's been grown back over
These are the floodwaters?
This is May 2010, yes, I'm sorry.
This is prime compared to the other floodwaters that you, you, you-
There are some areas, and this was two days after the rain had stopped. I think it was flown May 4th, and it rained May 1st and 2nd of 2010. And there are some areas that are still holding water, especially in these sinkholes. It looks like there's a drainage channel that goes back through here and probably somewhere
Ms. Chairman, I just wondered if maybe Mr. Bruce would go for commercial general instead of light industrial on that piece of property? I know light industrial, it scares the community to hear the word industrial, but I don't know whether Mr. Bruce would be interested in that or not.
Okay. Regarding your question, I could take the, what is, commercial general, commercial services, which is the highest?
The higher of the two.
Okay. I'd be willing to take the commercial general instead of light industrial, but I do like the commercial neighborhood because that allows you to put either a single-family home or duplex or up to 5,000 square foot commercial building. But I'm good with the commercial services or-
If you want the higher of the two, you want commercial general.
All right. Commercial general would be fine in place of the light industrial, but I'd still like the commercial neighborhood along the front because that does allow homes to go along the front.
In your commercial neighborhood, are you really looking maybe to more homes, more for community?
Be a buffer along the front because you would have single-family homes or duplex, not likely to have an apartment complex. Although there is good, there was a question asked about the soil. There is enough soil out there to do probably a step system to take care of at least 50 homes, possibly more, because it's a good swath of soil all along the front there, but back about 600 feet all across the front and are deeper. And we've had the grid state and had the soil worked by Randy Dickerson, so it's loaded with good soil along the front. And the reason we're asking for the commercial only in the back is because when you get back there, it's kind of a rock pile. You know, anytime you see trees in this county, you can pretty well bet limestone's pretty close. And if you jump across the fence, that's the old Stone Man Rock Way over there, and so there's plenty of rock out there. But we still have a good swath of soil on the front that would allow a step system to be installed, you know, for at least 50 houses, you know. And so, but anyway, I'm good with the higher commercial zoning in place of the light industrial.
Any other questions for Mr. Bruce while he's up here? Thank you.
Now, Doug, assuming that this was going to be rezoned with commercial neighborhood up front and commercial general in the back, what type of buffering is between the two?
There's not any required between the two zoning themselves, commercial neighborhood and commercial services. You wouldn't see any buffering required between the two of them. You would be required to see buffering between them and the adjacent property that's still zoned, single-family. Now, they wouldn't have to do anything adjacent to the heavy industrial zoned property, but I mean, they might want to, you know, on their own accord, but they wouldn't be required to do anything to that because they're actually the lesser of the two, so they wouldn't be required to do anything.
Oh, if it was commercial neighborhood up front and light industrial in the back, a buffer would be required between the two?
There'd be a small buffer required between the two, that's correct.
But with commercial neighborhood, commercial general, there's not a buffer-
No, there's not a buffer required between the two of them.
Doug, can you give us a brief review of the difference between commercial neighborhood and commercial general?
Again, commercial neighborhood, again, being the most restrictive of the three commercial zones, commercial general being the least. One of the big differences between the two, again, is the residential uses. We've talked about that, so I won't go back into that again.
There is no, there is, there is no residential then in-
Commercial general, no. Just only in commercial neighborhood. Let's see here, just looking through some of the commercial uses themselves. Let's see. Well, and I will say this, now, this was the same for light industrial as commercial general. Adult entertainment is allowed by special exception, but before everybody starts, you know, raising their eyebrows about that, there are distance requirements that I doubt this site would be able to meet, so I'm not very concerned with that. Animal care and veterinary services are both permitted in that zone. Automobile, automotive parking, like a big parking lot, but that's it, would be allowed, again, by special exception in commercial general, but not in commercial neighborhood. Automotive repair and servicing is allowed in commercial general, only by special exception in commercial neighborhood. Let's see what else is different here. Construction, sales, and services, kind of what we were talking about, would not be allowed in commercial neighborhood, would be allowed in commercial services. Indoor entertainment and amusements, excuse me, would be allowed by special exception in the commercial neighborhood, but allowed by right in the commercial general zone. Food drive-ins, drive-through services would be allowed only by special exception in commercial neighborhood, but would be allowed by right in commercial general. General business communication services are not allowed in commercial neighborhood, but are in commercial general. Let's see, the big, again, one of the big differences between the general retail, there is a 5,000 square foot limit for general retail activities in commercial neighborhood, but not in commercial general. No group assembly allowed in commercial neighborhood, special exception in commercial general. Transit accommodations, hotels and things, are not allowed in commercial general. Neither are vehicular craft or related equipment sales, like a car lot, would not be allowed in commercial neighborhood, would be allowed in commercial general. That's kind of the high points.
Ms. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve it, commercial neighborhood, commercial general.
Commercial general would replace light industrial. You have a motion and a second. Now, discussion.
I have a question. Mike, based on your assessment of the property as you see it, given all the drainage, et cetera, issues, if we were to leave it zoned as is, residential medium, how many houses do you think could realistically go on that property using a step system?
Well, you'd need at least 60 to make the step system viable. And how many acres did we say?
Well, and that portion of it is 17, I think. I think one of the bigger issues you're going to have is just how he structures it and access, because the area along the front, when you look at the map that he's proposing, I mean, you've got the larger area right there where kind of Mike's pointer is, then you've got a smaller area between, right there, right in there, and then you've got a portion-
a portion of that other property there. I mean, realistically, there's only gonna be so much you can do with that, even with single-family, or even if it's zoned Commercial Neighborhood. You know, realistically, you only have so much you're gonna be able to do with that. So access is gonna be, I think, one of the primary concerns we're gonna be looking at.
The adequate soil area that was mentioned may actually be a part of a compensating cut, depending on what is placed.
It could be.
So that may reduce your usable soil.
Yes, right. So, I mean, you don't want to disturb your good soils area, so if you have to fill in the flood zone area, you don't want to take out your good soil for a step system. And it's not a deep floodplain. I think the base flood's saying 451, there's a, excuse me, 541, there's a 540 contour right there, so it's not real deep, and it's actually showing up into higher elevations than what this base flood is saying, so. I mean, this area in the back would need special attention. You could fill in the sinkholes and build over the top of them, but it gets awful expensive. You know, you could develop this area farther back outside of the floodplain and use this area for your step system if need be, and some of this area up front for other uses. So, I mean, it's challenging to say how much, I mean, you can't just say we're gonna get 1.9 houses per acre, because it's, there's so many variables in that. There is a large CUD transmission line, a 48-inch transmission line through here. We'd have to stay, you know, outside of that easement. So, I mean, there's all kinds of facets to this. It's not a simple 1.9 units per acre.
I will add that under the RM zone, and again, in a perfect world, if you took the 17 acres, he's looking to do Commercial Neighborhood and just kind of ran a rough calculation on that, you're thinking about three units an acre, so that's what my math has read, about 51 units for 17 acres. Now, he's never gonna get that many, you know, just because of the way it's laid out and everything, but, I mean, you can get residential, some amount of residential uses along the frontage, even with RM. Now, you can't have multifamily, like duplexes or multifamily, you can't do that, but, I mean, you would have the ability to put some houses along the frontage.
Well, I guess that's part of what my thinking was, is I'm trying to help the neighbors understand that even without a rezoning, what are the possibilities there, you know, what are the options? And then, of course, from a planning standpoint, I'm always seeking the highest and best use of the plan, of the land. I have stated before and will again that I'm fundamentally opposed to speculative rezoning. I don't like when somebody comes up here and wants to have something rezoned and they don't know what it is they're gonna do with it. That's scary to me, that's scary to the neighbors. So, for that reason alone, given the traffic and the drainage, because I know the traffic in that area, and the pictures are a little deceiving to me, I think, because it looks like the road's nice and wide and, you know, you wouldn't have issues, you have issues in that area. So, I have enough real-world concerns of this that I can't support it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I seem to have somewhat of the same problem. I'm trying to look at something, I don't know what I'm looking at. I keep hearing, well, we can put this, we can put this, and whatever, and when something's brought to me for planning, I like to know what I'm seeing, what's going there, what it's going to be. Hey, this is what I want to put here, this is what it will be. And as I keep looking at this, I keep moving, and it's a moving target that I'm having a problem with also.
My basis for seconding the motion was that Commercial Neighborhood in the front with the mixed-use dwellings, duplexes of that nature, and the proposed stockpiling, which was the original plan in the rear, which would be fitting for the Commercial General. So, that's the basis I'm making, made the approval on for my part.
Thank you. Mike, Ms. Hoard, when she was up here, was point-blank concerned about the engineering of this piece of property. Would you explain to everyone what engineering would be done on any proposed development that would go on it? It'd be a double dip, correct? The developer as well as the county?
Yes, right. Mr. Bruce or whoever develops this property would hire an engineer, and he would, the engineer, he or she would have to design to county standards. We have several standards we look at, we look at stormwater, we look at traffic, we look at, Doug looks at the density based on the zoning, we look at the road configuration to see if it, you know, meets our standards. So, we're not allowed to run any more water on adjacent properties than historically has leave, you know, has left the site. We're, you know, we're not supposed to, you know, impact the neighborhood with water. I mean, if this is, these sinkholes fill up, we have to look at that. I mean, there's several factors we have to look at. So, I mean, water quality, water quantity, traffic, just CUD has to look at, you know, can they support this development with water? Can it be developed with a step system, or will it be conventional? I mean, there are several factors that go into this design, so, I mean, it's, we can't impact the neighbors more than, than it's already happened, that historically, you know, stormwater can't, we can't run more water off onto the neighbors, essentially is one of the big things that I look at.
Thank you, Mike. Other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request for Donell Bruce. The item number is 19-A-009, from RM Residential Medium Density to Commercial Neighborhood and Commercial General. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition? Motion carries, thank you. This is a rezoning request that will be heard before the full county commission on Thursday, June 13th, 6:30 PM, in this courtroom. Thursday, June 13th, 6:30 PM, in this courtroom. Item 6C219-A-010, Ruston Smith, location Rock Springs Midland Road. Commission district is 8, county commissioner is Pettis Reed. Size of the site is approximately 11.7 acres, tax map is 171. Existing zoning is residential low-density, proposed zoning is Commercial Services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our second and final rezoning of the evening request is for a piece of property. The applicant is proposing to zone this property to establish a base of operations for a landscaping company. The applicant had originally purchased the property, didn't realize that they had to get the property rezoned in order to run the business off of the property. Landscaping companies are classified as a construction, sales, and service use in the zoning ordinance. Commercial Services is the first commercial zone that will allow for that. The applicant has included a concept plan, showing his intentions with the application. It's on your iPads as well. And the applicant has indicated he has four employees that work for the business. He has landscaping equipment, several vehicles, a dump truck, landscaping trucks and trailers. Typical hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, although the employees are only on-site for about an hour in the morning and an hour or so in the evening. Maintenance of equipment is typically what occurs on Saturdays. Now, the applicant had originally requested just a portion of the property to be rezoned for his landscaping company, namely that the skinnier portion of the lot, but upon further discussion, he did decide to ask for the entire property with the possibility of maybe just scaling back if the commission felt necessary. Access with the property would be on Rock Springs Midland Road. Any new or modified ingress egress points, again, would have to be approved by the highway department, county's highway department. The zoning ordinance does require a hard dustless surface, but areas primarily used for storage can have a gravel base. Again, any, even if this is approved, application, this application is approved, he will have to submit an engineered site plan, just showing where the existing buildings are, the new parking areas, those things, bringing things up to county specifications. That would include buffering. A Type 2 buffer is required adjacent to residentially zoned properties. As you can see from the aerial maps, there is quite a bit of existing landscape material on the property. That can be included as part of that, but again, they would just need to show that as part of a landscape plan, and our performance standards would also apply. Staff, I made a neutral recommendation on this, mainly because I wasn't sure if we really needed to zone the whole property or not. It's about 250 feet from an existing church. The planning commission may feel it's more appropriate to only zone a portion of the property as opposed to the whole track. The applicant is present, and with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Allen.
Doug, if we were only going to do a part of it, what part would you recommend?
The part where his business is, the, that's, can you bring up the, yeah, kind of the extent, maybe where that, can I borrow the mouse? Thanks. Probably, originally, he was just asking for this part of it right here, the skinnier portion, because the business is pretty much contained in this area. So, I mean, giving him this would also allow him opportunity to expand, should he want to expand in the future, without having to come back to rezonate. I don't know if necessarily the whole thing has to be rezoned, but I was thinking just primarily, and this is what he was asking for originally, was this area right in here. Yes.
Other questions for staff? Is a applicant present, please? Mr. Smith, if you would give us a brief description of what you want to do?
Yes, sir. My name is Ruston Smith, I live at 903 Banner Drive. We purchased this property as a base of operations for our landscape company that we bought. I was unaware, as Doug mentioned, for the zoning requirements, what I found out, and that's why we're here. We plan and hope to do business in the future, and our company's strong and growing, but we don't have any customer base or any traffic created. And like Doug mentioned, we're only there in the mornings pretty much, and in the evenings around 5:00, and that's basically it. We might have a pile of mulch or something. No, sir. No, sir. No, no, I don't want anybody there. We'll deliver and install.
What's your reasoning in asking for the entire property?
Just to make it easier in the process. I didn't need it. Doug thought it might cut out some confusion, I believe. But no, I don't need to zone the whole property.
I think when we had talked about it, it was just a, like, do you just want to ask for the whole thing and they can scale it back, should they decide only a portion was more appropriate? So, yeah, I mean, there was, that was really the big reason behind. He wasn't asking for the whole thing up front, I just said, let's just do the whole thing up front, and then, you know, that way, they can always add, they can always take away they can't add, so it's easier to take away.
Yes, ma'am. We don't have use for that. Pretty much all I use it for is to park the trucks and store a few trailers.
Doug, can you tell us about any buffering that would be required from Mr. Smith in order to operate a small business here?
Yes, he would have to do a Type 2 buffer between the property line and adjacent residential zoning. That can be, a Type 2 buffer is a 30-foot buffer without a fence, or a 15-foot with a fence and plantings. So, there's, we give him a couple of options there for that. Now, if the bulk of the property, he can leave, you know, if he's keeping most of those trees there, obviously, no one's gonna see that from adjacent property. That would qualify for a buffer, but he might have to do some supplementing, you know, he could use existing material, but he may have to do a little bit of supplementing on the, I guess that'd be the west side, and on the east side as well, just between where the drive is and the adjacent property, but, I mean, he's got a lot of material there he could use for that.
Oh, sorry. Any other questions from the commission for Mr. Smith?
Live in this area?
No, sir.
Okay, this is just a business?
Yes. My office is in my private. This doesn't actually have a physical address here, a mailing box, 911 address, rather. I have spoken with two neighbors that I have, and they have no objections, and they gave their support, and I have a signed letter from one of them, I couldn't catch up with the other one. But he gave his verbal consent.
Other questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question, and this, to whoever can answer. Is there a tax advantage to the applicant to split the zoning versus RM versus a C L or CS? Is there, does he, does he see it?
Sometimes, and of course, I don't work for the property assessor, so I can't swear this, but what I'll see them do sometimes is they'll do what's called a special interest on the property, where they are taxing a portion of the property a little differently than they're taxing the remainder of the property. So, they wouldn't be taxing the whole thing commercial, just the area that he's using as commercial. I have seen that, and now, again, that'd be up to Mr. Mitchell and his staff and how they would do that.
While it sounds, while it sounds maybe cleaner to split the zoning up, I'd just assume we keep it all one and approve it as one new zoning request, like he's applied for.
Which do you prefer? Zone back to where it breaks away, or zone the back too?
Like I said...
Same, the backs, as I remember, are pretty steep.
Yes.
Virtually unusable for...
Well, it's gradual slope, yes, sir. And then, I don't, I really don't have any use for it, and if I did, I'd maybe build a hunting cabin out there one day or something down the road.
Which do you prefer?
I'm open to either.
Well, let me, let me ask a question. You mentioned a second ago about parking trailers maybe in the future, parking vehicles or trailers. Do you ever see the need for you to expand back there on that back square to put equipment? If so, you probably need to zone it all in one.
I doubt I'll have that much. There's enough up front that I can, any trailers, my largest is a 20-foot trailer, equipment hauler. I don't really see the need for all of it, but I'm, like I said, I'm open to either.
Other questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you. This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 19-A-010, Ruston Smith. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
I'm Bob Sidens. I'm living in 597 Rock Springs Midland Road, which is about four tenths of a mile off of 231. We, the property, well, presented to this letter that we received on May the 11th, letter dated May the 1st. Anyway, we're here this evening. Did not know about a proposal for a commercial services zoning for that property. I'm aware of it. It's about two tenths of a mile, I guess, off 231. But anyway, and we just wanted to say that we do not support a proposal for commercial services in this residential area. There are homes around it, there are homes down the road, new subdivision, Lewis Downs subdivision. We moved here, or, excuse me, we bought this little 32-acre farm that we have. Again, a little leg of it butts up to the back of Mr. Smith's property, I see. And so, anyway, so we have, again, purchased the property in 1989, a little 32-acre Harris family farm, and we built and moved down here in 99 from Louisville, Kentucky, and have resided there ever since, and have seen lots of changes, but we appreciate the residential and agricultural status of the property. We've got houses around us, again, 32 acres. I enjoy that property. We had a 1928 Sears Roebuck house that just blew away in the tornado of November of last year, and we're still dealing with that. But anyhow, the, the main thing is, I, I feel sure we're within 500 feet. Certainly, we have property that butts up against his, but I'm sure other neighbors in our area would similarly feel that commercial property or commercial services should not be a part of this residential area. And in a nutshell, that's, that's it. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have of me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I don't know how this is directed or how to get the answers, but when you were talking about commercial general and commercial services and going the least direction for the gentleman previously, this was listed in the letter as commercial services, and Mr. Smith says he has no use for the back part of it at all. But at what point in time eventually, you know, if he grows and gets bigger and he needs to kind of keep moving on back a little bit, I mean, when does this happen, and how is that addressed, and is that something that he has to come back to you all and let you know that he's changed his mind, his business is bigger, and he has decided to go farther back? And I too, like my husband, feel that we've been in a community that's farms, five acres, 100 acres, whatever. People around us have cattle and raise corn, and we had had cattle, but now we're, we're into hagging. But just wondered what the changes were and how that would affect us later on. And if it is commercial, and then somebody's enticed on the corner to financially be enticed, then we end up with a gas station and a minute market, and the next thing you know, we've kind of lost our community. And as I mentioned, there is a small church there now, too. But most of us in the neighborhood have cattle and fishing ponds and corn and things like that. So, my concern is, I, I feel badly, because I don't begrudge him a business, that I feel badly about talking against, but if, if it goes commercial, I'm just afraid what else will go commercial. It can start on the corner and then just keep moving on down the road. And Rock Springs Midland, so far, is just a tiny subdivision, a new subdivision, but we're farms and, and that, that's it. We're just a small community, and I just hate to see that start and then start progressing down the road. In fact, right now, with the subdivision, in the morning, I won't leave anywhere until after 8:00 because there'll be 10 people lined up at that stop sign trying to get to the school. But I just wonder what the process was, if he changes his mind in the future and he wants to go farther into that property, how that would affect us. Thank you.
Anyone else? You had a question? Would you like to make a comment?
No, I think not.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mike, can you pull up- Can you pull up the soils map? Pardon me. And then, what is adjacent to the west? And would you point out the church again? It's diagonally across to the west?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just across the street.
Across the street and a little bit to the west.
The next parcel to the west on that side of the street, I mean, it looks, what is it?
They're just single-family home, oh, there's, you can see the church right there. Mike's kind of got it in the center of the screen. Now, the property immediately adjacent, I, I mean, it's zoned for single-family use, adjacent to the site.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. And they've, yeah, they've got stuff sitting out there, right, yeah.
And that bush.
Yeah, it's not zoned commercial, and I'm not aware of any, nothing that I've looked at from a, from a zoning standpoint.
There's the debris from the little house that was taken out with the tornado that the gentleman was talking about.
Mike, can you show us the other nearest zoning? Because it's an awfully big leap to go from RL to CS. I'd like to see what other zonings out there.
Yeah, Dement Construction over here's got light industrial. This is, what's his name, also, Buddy Gamble's place, yeah, Buddy Gamble. Down here's light industrial as well. Let's see, RM to the west. This is Lewis Downs here. Not, not a whole lot of commercial around. I'll zoom out a little bit more.
Is the CS that's been requested, is that the lowest zoning that would permit him to do his business?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Doug, review us again, what else, anything else that could go in that zone and that, you know, if he chose to sell the property?
Right. Well, and starting with residential uses, there's not any residential uses allowed in commercial services. There are several community facility activities that you could have there, like administrative services, small or medium community assemblies. A large community assembly doesn't be like a church or something like that. A church that's over 500 would be a large community assembly, could be done by special exception. You could have a school, cultural recreational services, essential services, things like that, personal group care facilities, like a daycare or something like that. Let's see, animal care and veterinarian services are permitted, automobile repair and servicing, consumer repair, construction sales and services, again, that's the first zone that would allow that, entertainment and amusement services indoors, financial administrative services like banks and things are permitted, food and beverage services, drive-ins, drive-throughs for food and beverage services, communication services, general business, general personal services. Now, mini warehouses fall under that, but they would have to be special exception in that zone. Retail trade, no limit to the size, except for, you know, what's allowed by, you know, zone, or setbacks and whatnot, but you're not limited to 5,000 square feet in that zone. Group assembly by special exception, medical services, transit accommodations are allowed, undertaking services would be allowed, and agricultural sales and services. Those are, again, variety of the, the uses that would be allowed in that zone. It's kind of the middle of the road between the two.
This not being the primary business address that he's using and for what his, are there any way that he could do a commercial neighborhood with a special exception?
No, not with construction, sales, and service. It's just not permitted.
Doug, if we left it at his original plan to leave just that front part as the commercial services and leave the back as it was, that way, the property that touches the individuals that have come up here and spoke have their concerns, that way, it would remove that concern that they have-
Yes.
...of him expanding on back, which would give them the opportunity, if he decided to come on back with more commercial services at a later date, they would have an input into that.
That is correct, yes, sir. They would. Now, he'll have to do a, like a, he'll have to have a survey, do a quick legal description of the area that he wants to have zoned, if you just do the portion of it, which, you know, that, that is what it is.
Yeah.
But, but you're absolutely right, and that answers the question that the lady that spoke had about that.
Answer to hers, and plus, what he's talking about here in that area, he's talking about back there, it looks like that it would be a problem anyway for what he-
Right.
...what he's wanting to do. So, that would probably be the way that we'd need to do with that, and that would protect that neighborhood.
Right, and like you said, if, should he decide to come back in the future, we'd just be going through the same process we're going through right now.
How do we specify tonight that we just, what portion we want rezoned?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
How do we purposely set a motion and tack that will actually just show that that's the portion we want rezoned?
Well, I would assume, like just myself, that you're probably talking, just kind of right, if, if you kind of say that this is what you're looking for-
That's correct.
-then we'll make it, we'll, we'll make sure that that gets reflected in the county commission meeting, should this be approved that way.
As far as my part, I, being that we're sort of cleaning up a mistake in construction, I'd rather make it as small as possible for half of that.
Yeah, I, I think that would, you cut it off there, it would limit what more he could do anyway, and if he did sell it, it'd still limit what could take place, and if he wanted to expand, he'd have to come back through the proper channels and-
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if it's not even that far, if you just want to pull it up a little bit, I think what we could do is, you know, we could meet with the applicant and say, okay, kind of like halfway between where his business is and the back property line, we could kind of estimate where that line is, and then he could have the legal description drawn up showing that. That would probably-
Yeah, whatever would meet the proper setbacks, I think, just-
Right, and give him some room for expansion as well, so I think we could, we can make that happen.
But do we need to be that specific with it, Doug, to say where we cut it off or let you handle it with the applicant? I think we can, I mean, it's-
As long as I have, I have an idea where you're going with it, I can meet with the applicant and kind of go from there.
I could, I could, I would feel better even if it makes sense to shorten it, but I'm fine with cutting it straight across, so, and leaving the backside, you know, residential. So, to that, I'll make that motion to approve with a limited part of that being commercial services.
Limited front part? Okay.
All, all the way to the corner where it cuts over west, yes. I'm good with anything up to that point.
Okay. Everyone understand that?
I was going to answer Mike's question. Rock, rock and rock. Gladeville, Talbot, and Barfield Rock.
So, we're very, very limited as to anything else?
Yes.
Plus sewer gets-
Yeah. The majority of it's Gladeville Rock. There is some Dilton Rock here, and then Talbot Rock in the very front corner, so. Sewer's not in this area at the moment.
Mike, you had a screen up a second ago where you had it zoomed pretty far out and had zoning.
Oh.
Could we look at that one more time?
Yes, ma'am.
Because from what I could tell, there was nothing to the left of Shekelville Highway that was zoned commercial for any distance.
Turn off the parcel. So, this is medium, residential medium density, low density, and it'll draw in just a second.
It's primarily light industrial on the east side and some commercial general in there. The darker purple is heavy industrial. The closest on the west side, I think, is what you're asking for. Looks like you've got some commercial services down there where Mike's pointing out, and there's a little bit of office professional commercial services on the north side as you, further up.
Oh.
Yeah, right there. That, that's past 269, so it's, as far as any commercial, actually, it's down there.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I mean, as far as any commercial zoning, or actually, non-residential zoning on the western side, you're correct, there's not a whole lot, not a whole lot there.
I just know you always caution us about spot zoning, and I, I appreciate the topography of the land plays a factor here, but in my mind, this couldn't be any more definition of a residential area, so for that reason, I won't support it.
We have a motion and a second to approve this rezoning request. Other questions or comments? Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve the front portion of this property. The item number is 19-A010 for Ruston Smith, and this will be from residential low density to commercial services.
Did I understand that he, was this currently a landscaping business that he bought?
No, I, he bought the property, and then I think he put up a, if I remember right, that was an agricultural structure at first, and then it just morphed into a commercial business is what happened. So, it was not that way when he bought it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ready to vote? Commissioner Allen?
This is really more of a side note, not related to this specific vote, but the two parcels that are beside it that look like there could potentially be some commercial activity, I think we need to look into those.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Of course, there's a lot of work that staff will have left to do with the applicant. That concludes our agenda items. Staff, any reports?
Don't have anything, Mike, did you? No.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May the 28th. That's not a Monday morning, but a Tuesday morning, May 28th, 9:00 a.m., and the planning mess. We moved it to a Tuesday because of Memorial Day. Okay. Any questions on that? Tuesday morning?
We've got a work session.
We're working on one, yes. We have, we have it advertised as a work session. We'll, we'll email you with additional details on that.
We had, had a geologist said that he would not come early, early in the morning. He's retired, and he says he doesn't wake up that early, so.
Work, work sessions are for the school board. Ours would be a training session, Commissioner Lance. Anything else? Thank you for your time, your attendance, and your participation. We are adjourned.